They seem as good as they are. She looks a little cold.
We're in Arizona this morning.
Last day.
I don't know, I've been kicking around everything, but I still didn't cope if you think that's what just I've been moving, I do not. Dead breath and air. Close to do wonders, don't they?
Got a moment, Clark, and we'll call Monday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, Board of Chico Soto meeting to convene. Roll call, members are present, along with Secretary Sheila Chekotan. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda? Absolutely. Right. Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to approve today's agenda, May twelfth. Any discussion? If not, I want to favor say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried. Approve the minutes from last Monday, May fifth. Is there a second? Second. Motion by Steve, second by Ida, to approve the minutes from May fifth. Any discussion? Not hearing any, I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. We'll go right into Heartland Insurance Risk Call. Eleven oh five, one minute to go, but I got it. Today, uh, Heartland Insurance Risk Call, all insurance and insurance services, do you have a member? Uh, present Heartland Insurance Regal. Good morning.
Good morning. So Mary's handing out the information. And I just kind of want to go over, just a reminder, so previously, there had not been any rate changes for Heartland for like the past fifteen years, prior to two thousand twenty-three. At that point, um, the Heartland Board did authorize a rate study, um, which was done by the Actuarian Associates. And they did adopt those rates, um, the rate changes that went into effect for last year, for two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-five. And those same rates are being used this year, so there hasn't been an adjust, I mean, it's the, these are the same rates for the twenty-five, twenty-six policy year. And probably will remain the same for the next year, and then the board will need to decide if they're gonna look at, look at the rates or how they want to handle that. But those are the same for now. Um, and I think I'll just go ahead and let Mary get started on that.
Yes, absolutely. So as Judy said, the rates all remain the same. Um, so anything that, when you see the increases or decreases, with the exception of the work comp, um, that is all directly related to the exposures that were presented to the properties up just about, you know, one percent. Uh, and the marine values are up almost two percent. Uh, your EDP, which is electronic data, um, is down a little bit, actually down quite a bit, that's about half of the values that you had last year. Employee count stayed the same. Law enforcement is up, um, by four. The general liability expenditures are up ten percent. Uh, vehicles are down by two. Payroll is up almost thirteen percent. And then the mod is, again, that one's up two points. So, uh, is everybody familiar with the experience mod?
We have a new supervisor, I didn't even know the mod factors.
Okay.
Yeah.
So mod factor is determined by, um, like the, um, the NCCI, which is a national organization that looks at the states, they look at the industry or governmental entity that you are in, compare you to a similar size county, and they try to determine where you should be with your work comp losses. So one point O means you are where they would expect you to be. Anything above that means you might be a little bit higher in your losses, lower means that you're doing a little bit better. Um, so that mod directly affects your premium. Um, it goes by percentage, it kind of up bumps it by two percent or so, um, of your standard premium. On that second page is, is going up to a one point O two. So still within, I mean, a good range. Um, if you look at the, the back page, you'll see this is kind of like an overview. There's three years that go into your mod, not including the current year. So if you look at that, you do, I mean, your, the last year that just jumped on has been better than your prior two years. Um, not sure where your losses are in the current year, and we will take a look at those at the end of this policy year, depending on if they are higher or lower than what twenty-one, twenty-two was. Um, that will impact your mod for next year. So we try to take a look at that, see where those losses are coming in, and if there's any impact for local risk safety that we can put into place there. So jumping back to the first page, um, so you'll see that your, um, your biggest increase is, well, you, you see a bigger increase from percentage-wise on your excess liability reinsurance limits. Um, what was going on before is everybody was kind of, from I don't know how long ago, twenty, twenty-five years, um, had picked their limits, and that's what they were being charged year after year. We found that there are some counties that have much higher limits, um, than even what you have, that were paying less, and some that had lower limits that were actually paying more. Um, we're not quite sure how those rates were determined back then, um, but the board made a determination to kind of level out the, uh, what people were paying for their limits. So if they were actually taking higher limits, then they were going to be paying a little bit more than, um, than what they previously had been, and some people maybe paid less just because they, um, were paying rates more than they needed to be paid. We also put in, um, the, so everybody, all the counties have to have a minimum of a five million limit. Um, the other big premium jump is your work comp. Part of that, I'm almost at thirteen percent of that is due to your payroll increase.
Can we talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely.
So, um, look at this sheet. We were quoted back in January for only a ninety-six thousand, not a hundred thousand. And then it went up to a hundred and seventeen thousand today. What information did the county give you guys? Because law enforcement went from eighteen number of officers up to twenty-two, and then a big jump of almost eight hundred thousand dollars in payroll. Well, we know that did not happen.
So we can certainly, well, we, and that's kind of our next point, is that we want everybody to go over the schedules of expenditures and payroll, property values that, that we were given.
Okay.
Based it on, and we have till May thirty-first to make those changes.
Do you see those, Judy, those big jumps? We don't know. Just getting it this morning, Scott opened the packet up this morning, um, and me and Sheila, Scott were looking at it, and it's like, how did we climb by four law enforcement officers?
And that, that information would have been given to you.
I know, I know.
Yeah. That's what I told them.
Yeah.
Do you guys count matrons as part of the number of officers?
It's whatever you filled out, uh, it's the document, documentation that you sent directly to, to us, so.
Cause that's where we think the form went into place, is the four ma- matrons we had on staff. I'm wondering if we set those at the same rate for, cause they are the work.
Yeah, they're, our timeline is needed, yeah, I'm calling.
So from a work comp standpoint, that would just be payroll, but from the law enforcement, that's the liability of those. So if they're, don't have the same liability, then we would want to take a look at those and reduce that number. Just payroll, the work comp is just based on payroll.
And then we don't know why payroll went up a money, a hundred and thousand dollars. Don't look at that before we.
I would say that's probably the biggest jump that I've seen.
It is. Yeah, we delayed that, so, sorry.
No, no, that's fine, great question, and that was the one point that we do have until May thirty-first to make any of those changes. Um, do you have the current schedule, Scott? That we base this on, if not, we will email them?
Fifty-eight, mail it to me too.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Any other questions, other than the exposures?
Uh, property went up a little bit, it's, it's what I put it.
The, the values, whether, um, that's based on what we give to us, is we did not, or the carrier didn't mandate any, um, any increase in values this year.
So that would be just how, what you increase your values.
Yeah.
Then we're at a current level of seven million liability, or credit limit, sorry.
Your current limit, yep, this.
For your excess, yeah, you still have the a million underneath that.
Is there any other questions? But I was just gonna kind of speak to, um, the safety committees, and just how last year Heartland had, um, required that safety committees be established for each county, and they meet on a quarterly basis in order to receive the ten percent safety savings discount. So you guys are doing that, filling that requirement, and just the importance of, you know, the safety, and, and you guys have stepped up and, you know, jumped in on that, so. Uh, and then the other thing that Heartland, they, um, did, the board last year did also approve a variable dividend plan, and which will calculate the loss ratio is at the end of the policy period. So at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five, it's seven-one through twenty, seven-one, twenty-four through six-thirty, twenty-five, at the end of that, then we'll calculate with the loss ratio, any loss ratio under thirty percent will receive a return of premium to their surplus. So, and it'll just depend, it's calculated out, like if you get ten percent back, seven percent, just depending on what your, um, but Scott, Scott will get that information when they get that calculated, so. And that'll be available probably at October meeting, so we'll, um, to that list. And then, um, just confirming that, we'll have the harassment prevention training again. Um, and the board will act on that at the next meeting on what is going to be approved, um, what our options are for in-person and, and then you can still have the KPA system, so we'll work on getting that on setup, and I can help facilitate those meetings for in the fall, um, getting that scheduled. And then the only other thing, just, uh, the fall, um, Heartland Fall Seminar is set for September eleventh, and it will be at the Ryanek Center in Toledo. And we're going to go ahead, um, last year, we had a, a topic, a presentation on generational um, changes in the workforce, and everyone really enjoyed that. Um, we talked about it at the last meeting, and Heartland actually wants to see that, a very solemn presentation to that again. Um, felt that that was really beneficial to people, so we're gonna do that, and we'll have, uh, we will have safety, some type of safety, um, information, and then a law review. So we'll have doctors and heatner there again to do a law review. So, um, that's kind of what we're looking at, so all supervisors are, you know, welcome to attend, department heads, and anyone else in the departments, who you feel would benefit from going, they're everyone's welcome, so. And the more, the more, the better, so.
Uh, are you coming up with safety meeting on June?
I am.
Okay.
You're back up here.
June ninth, sorry, June ninth.
June ninth, yeah.
We're gonna go with EMS, we know we're not today. They're not.
We can, we have a, yes, we want.
Also, can I ask, when did, just my, on the side, when the, uh, potential changes to workman's comp, what was the premium increase? I mean, overall dollar amount, like last year you had.
So twelve per unit was five hundred twenty-one thousand, it's going to five hundred fifty-five thousand. So about six point. You guys know.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. So EMS.
Yeah, and again, that may be different depending on the payroll, so you may not be seeing that, yeah.
I think, yeah, we need to look into that payroll issue and the number of officers.
Perfect, okay, so on the EMS, um, this one, you'll see, maybe, um, potentially, there's a six point two four payroll increase, so not sure if that is accurate or not. Um, the general liability, the expenditures are way up on the general liability. Um, they were three fifty-four or so, uh, last year, and, uh, the projection that we were given is nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So I'm not sure if that, that big jump is accurate or not, but that is what is really gonna be driving, um, your premium increase. So last year was fifty-three, three oh six, uh, and the projection is sixty-four, nine thirty. So again, most of that is, um, attributable to the general liability and the expenditures that were, were given to us. So we can send those over as well.
Yeah.
So you can take a look at that. Yeah, cause with the, with the flat rates, it's all related to the exposures that were presented to us.
Yeah, I don't know if our director would be so happy that it went up eleven thousand dollars. Yeah, we need to double check that.
Exactly, perfect. Yeah, cause that's almost completely the, the general liability expenditures.
Exactly. Otherwise, everything else pretty much stays.
Yeah, your property went up a little bit.
Any other questions, board, um, about the Chickasaw County EMS regal premium?
Is our cyber coverage, has that changed or?
You mean as far as the limits or, no, I think, so we're saying the same, the limits, no.
Any other questions for?
Okay.
Back to Taylor or?
What's up?
Everybody in the county now?
We're gonna go to FOMC.
Oh.
Yeah, and then we're done for the day.
Thank you.
See you.
Steve, you just, Steve, you just moved to one fifteen.
Did they sign off?
Did they, what? Next to, eleven oh five, do you have any public number? Thank you.
Moving on to Sheriff Ryan Schaub, who gets desk purchasing at two thousand twenty-five dollars. Good morning, so everybody, can I copy of the quote that was given by Jacob, Carl Sharpley, reached out to me saying that they went into production here last week. We were still, were interested in wanting to see if I had any of the background, not knowing where things could be at. And they went into production last week, potential delivery date, end of the month, November, June, somewhere in there. Uh, they both given was fifty-one or sixty-four twenty, um, just state the pricing. It increased last year, from last year's price, uh, by fifteen hundred dollars, I think it was, somewhere in there. So it was not budgeted for, that's one of the items we did take out of this current fiscal year, budget last year during the process, based on month-end report that I got in April, and some figures that I put in, where I think things are gonna potentially end up. So many unknowns in this profession, but I've been comfortable with purchasing this, so, uh, that's where I should want to go, but. The fleet still needs to be maintained, I know I did not budget for one this next twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. We'll see if things come out of that, but budget year's gonna be a lot tighter compared to, to what this current one is. Vehicles, they get used, hard, we depend on, and we constantly have to be updating them. This would go and replace a current, uh, two thousand eighteen Charger, it's got a hundred and sixteen thousand miles. I have another Charger that goes to the shop here in about two weeks, it's running a four thousand dollar repair, so. Expenses aren't gonna change, they're just gonna keep going up, the, and that Charger's got a hundred and twenty-five thousand, it still is to be in the fleet for, to see the future, so.
There's two Chargers left?
Yes. An eighteen and an eighteen. So.
Did you say you did have one budgeted for next year?
No, I did not.
So, yeah, about fourteen months ago, you wanted one, and then took it out last, it, March.
During the budget season, but work sessions for the twenty-fourth, five fiscal year, yeah.
The year prior to that, you had two budgeted, and then the third one was a repair swap, cause it got totaled.
Yeah, yes, correct. We had one budgeted, and I think that things just worked out, we had enough to purchase the two, I got opportunity to purchase the two. So, so, yeah. There was not one budget for the current fiscal year, and there's not one budget for next fiscal year. Were able to reuse some of the, potentially reuse some of the equipment out of the Charger to go into this one, but there'd still be, you know, your updating costs, I have quotes on that, cause I haven't gone down that path yet.
When would you receive this?
Uh, yeah, this fiscal year, but don't have a delivery date, but production was last week, finishing up this week, they're typically three, four weeks after production.
Is this part of the state but anymore, is that?
It is, yeah, it is. Carl's the only one who can state the pricing for these vehicles in the state.
So fifty-four thousand, three seventy-nine and twenty cents?
Fifty-one thousand, four sixty-four twenties, that got here.
So it's a discount. So, yeah.
Yep.
So fifty-one, four sixty-four, twenty. Can we discuss a little bit about, maybe the board didn't get there yet, but what do you think? When we did the budget process, you were gonna potentially get back a hundred thousand dollars? Are you still in the?
I was comfortable with that number still, yes.
Yeah, you know?
Unless there's something that's just unforeseeable that really happens the next month and a half, payroll wise, I'm still comfortable with that dollar amount.
And currently, in the black book that we have behind this, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand is your balance, end of May, sorry, end of April?
I can't think back, like, I don't have it on top of my head, but.
So I, I look at that from the board also, just. I was on the fence, I was gonna tell that, you know, it's just that you have some money left currently, and at the end of April, you had seven hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars to be spent, yeah, in your budget, it's your, it's your expense, it's, um, I hope you don't spend that much, but.
Thank you. So pay two.
My only concern is, you know, the public persona, which is laying all these people off and cutting things, and then buying new vehicles. It's not gonna be good luck. That's my only concern, because I understand that the fleet's, that, but it's just, that concern, that part of the concern.
Where, where? Would it be updated this year, yet?
I need to quote what that would be, um, be my thoughts too, is get the updating paid for, whether it's scheduled or not, based on their scheduling, but I'd like to potentially pull some funds out of this current fiscal year, because next year is gonna be a lot tighter. I'm anticipating updating costs based on last year's to be in the upper twenties. We can reuse some of the equipment in the, in the Charger, but not a lot of it.
Uh, I'll just make a comment, cause like I've said before, this, this is a tough decision, just because like Isaac stated, um, but we were told in budget work sessions that you're gonna spend seven hundred thousand dollars of that budget, right?
It's possible, it could be unknowns, could, could be more than that, it definitely could be. I mean, I got two guys out right now. I'm paying overtime, you know, seeing like no one's business right now, because I got two out, plus a dispatcher, so. I don't know what can happen, that's, I, I'm a twenty-four hour, seven days in the office. The phone need to be answered, things can be dispatched out, staff needs to be out there. When I staff out, I just can't say, sorry, we're closed today. It doesn't work, so, there's so many unknowns, I, I feel comfortable with what I've got projected, where I'm feeling gonna be, I've got one coming back here dispatch side soon, uh, but I still, I've one deputy out, non-related injury, another one leaving from F M L A here in about two weeks, so. Could be more, I didn't anticipate that being any less, could possibly be more.
I just think the public needs the sheriff's partner in a nervous situation, um, it just seems like we spent a lot of money on repairs on some of the older vehicles that they have. Scott or Steve, have any kind of concerns?
I, I, I understand the, the concerns that Isaac has, and I think we probably all have the same concern, but at the same time, if somebody calls the sheriff's office, they want somebody to respond, and we need vehicles, and, I mean, to me, the, the vehicle is no different than the gun or vest or anything else, it's all part of the tools they need to do their job. And I got the same, yeah, it's like Mex type. Laid out some people, we're borrowing last people, and budgets were cut, but those are old cars. One that called back, we did that, so.
If the vehicle wasn't, to me, to the eighteen, that's not all, it's, it's the mileage on it, and, and the repairs we've had, the biggest thing of concern.
And your life work, your own.
Yeah, had the fleet not known to where we have this this past year and a half, it's concerning if it was a little more updated, but that's, it's why you're getting this.
I don't think we have, we should, I don't think we need to be giving any money out of next year.
I don't know if I can on next year's, that's the thing.
Well, what I'm getting at is, I mean, there, next year's budget is, you couldn't be using money for a profit or not.
No, and based on my budget for, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it this, like, year to do that, so. That's, that's not the plan, to do that.
And that's why I guess I'll piggyback off of that, that's why I think he's here now, seeing his ending balance on April thirtieth, and there is that room, not knowing that back in February, March.
I guess if we undo it this year, it's not budgeted for next year, I have to give it one more year to replace it.
If the money's there next year, uh, if, if, if we're sitting at the same place we are this time next year, any of the balance flies, yeah.
But, same joke, and if we don't allow this, then this potential seventy thousand would go to the ending from balance, if you don't spend it, right?
Car's got a hundred and sixty on it, we average, I'd say twenty-two, twenty-five thousand a year per vehicle, just kind of depends what shift it was from then, so.
Is there any other discussion, or is there a motion to?
Move forward. Is there like any, uh, if we don't take this one, there's not another one, gonna come up and, yeah, I feel a little more comfortable, we have a little closer in here. So you're not for sure where you're setting?
Sure, as far as with the ability for, for police vehicles. I can't truthfully answer that question based on history and experience. I think if I don't give them an answer in the next week, then it's probably beyond. There's a lot of agencies in the same boat we are. I I would, that's what I'm saying, I'm not a Batman, I wouldn't that.
But I won't want to wait too much longer because the private auditor will tell us that you spent money, but you didn't receive it.
Have you been on that before?
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other discussion or is there? Motion or any?
Motion to approve a purchase of a twenty-twenty-five Tahoe by the sheriff's department. Price of fifty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty cents.
Is there a second? I'll say. Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to allow the sheriff to purchase two thousand twenty-five Tahoe from Carl Shavelay in the amount of fifty-one thousand, four sixty-four twenty cents. Any discussion?
Are we gonna be able to? Will, will be able to be updated before July first?
Don't think they'll be updated by July first. I need to check with the company to see their schedule wise. I think a lot of though, they can do is they can purchase, I can purchase the equipment to go in it, so come out this fiscal year budget to do that.
Would that be the labor and everything?
They can include that in, yes, so. Once they get the votes back, yeah, that's my plan is to pull up this fiscal budget. I don't feel comfortable with that next year's way things came off to be.
The private auditor will have that if you haven't received the equipment, but paying for it.
I think so, because it'll be, you're gonna get it.
I'll get it, correct. Yes.
Any discussion? If not, we will call Scott.
Hi.
Travis.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Isaac.
Nick.
Packman.
Jake.
I.
Motion is carried.
Mr. Mike, appreciate discussions. We're not keeping that needed.
Thank you.
Conservation Director Chad, I'm Paul, we're in J. Good morning.
Approved Resolution five twelve twenty-five eighteen, noticing this is a motion of none.
Next is weeds?
Yep. So again, for Isaac's, um, this is just a kind of a formality by Iowa code. Uh, you guys adopt this resolution and then if we have an issue with a, a weed problem, it'll be posted in the paper here. Then we have legal action to go after the property owner, whatever. If they don't go with them, we can actually hire somebody to destroy the weeds and then charge that to that property. So it's, it's just kind of those things we go through every year based on Iowa code and we haven't had to get very deep into the weeds unintended here the last few years. We, we had a few incidents, but it hasn't gotten too crazy, so, but it just gives us that legal right if we need to use it down the code, basically.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution five twelve twenty-five eighteen?
Yes, Scott, Isaac. Motion by Scott, second by Isaac, to approve five twelve dash twenty-five dash eighteen. Any discussion? If, um, if not, we'll call Scott, Isaac, Steve, Travis, Jake, I, motion carried. Department updates?
I'll roll quick. Um, so last, the sixth last week, we did do some pumping at the landfill. We monitored those, um, wells. And then they wanted me to, H L W Engineering Firm wanted me to monitor the, how quickly the tank fills up, so I before pumping and then after pumping, I measured it every minute for the first five minutes and then every five minutes for the next twenty-five. And I went back and checked the other wells to see what it had done, um, as far as in the lead shade in the cellar, in the wells, not the cells, and then sent that information to them and then they basically want us to do that once again next month, so we're just gonna continue pumping once a month at this point in time. They didn't want us to increase that to once a week. I didn't know where they were at, so I'm just kinda going with whatever they think they want for numbers, so we'll keep on that and then if you want me to send you those numbers next month after I get two months worth of data I can, you can take a look at that stuff and see where we're at. Obviously, we got our volunteer taken care of. He started knowing last week at airport. Everything seemed to be all right there. Both camp posts are back, they're in, things are rolling. Um, the campgrounds are doing quite well. We had just a little over, I think, thousand dollar week end. We had like eighteen out at airport. Puts us at about seventy-one thousand for the season. Year, I guess, again, we run, it's kind of confusing for me. It's still, I've been doing this for fifteen years now and our revenue goes on the fiscal year and not the candy season, so. But anyway, so we were about ten grand behind going into fall where we had been the last couple of seasons. So we were right at one oh three and a hundred and five thousand revenue at the end of the season, um, the last few years. Big part of that was the winters when they came in. We had some pretty lengthy extended stays there. So anyways, we're looking, we're off to a good start, as long as the weather rolls up. Uh, we should, should finish the season pretty good there as far as that goes. We do have a memorial event going in for Richie's man out there on the end of the playground. So the family's putting that in for us in memory of him. It was a long time. Obviously, resident, they camped out there quite a bit. Both boys did their Eagle Scout project out there, go walk into a section of the campground, so. Kind of fitting, um, to have a, a place up there for him. Uh, shelter house is moving along, steel's all on the roof and that's done a, um, kind of a little bit of holding pattern. That's right in the water, just getting cranked up last week for spring field trip season. He had over fifty hours in last week, so, uh, we're using the facility as it, we kind of shoved everything out of the way. It's got a roof, so we're gonna put tables in there a little bit and we're able to use that, so things are going well and we'll hopefully get that thing finished up as we get through the spring field trip season. Justin and Caleb obviously are, are off and running mowing, keeping parks looking good, um, grading, putting rock down on the drives in the parking lot. They finished their burn season. Caleb's out kind of heavy brush mowing anything that would be left over after we burned through. We like to go through, we try and burn everything every three years and mow it that following, for that same spring and then we'll go in, we'll spot a tree, what wasn't killed from the fire. Uh, then we're doing some brave work, trying to get Chickasaw Park finally cleaned up there as you come in that swale there, just a giant pain for us. Uh, they keep tearing it up and one rut becomes two and it holds more water than we can mow it. So it's dry enough now. We're trying to hopefully get that graded out and get the water to flow, so. That's kind of in a nutshell where we're at. Um, since I've been here last month, if you guys have any other questions, I mean, it's status quo right now, right? I mean, enjoying the beautiful weather and this is, this is when you're glad you were, worked this job, could you get outside and enjoy it, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Sheila, will you send me a copy? I think you send that usually to the paper, that notification.
Yeah, here's my, uh, minutes.
Yeah, whenever you get a chance or whenever it's done, so make sure Bob gets, gets his job done.
Any questions for Joe?
All right, thank you.
Enjoy the weather.
You too. The next thing is the social data employment. He's downstairs, but this one's a simple one. Discuss Memorial Day Veterans Program in courthouse grounds, uh, just follow the policy, just to know that the veterans will post some Memorial Day stuff on May twenty-sixth. Yeah, the insurance is good, we'll get that copy of that. Otherwise, same as before.
I'll make a motion, will you?
Is there a second? I'll say. Motion by Travis, second by Isaac, to allow Veterans Program on the courthouse grounds on May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Any discussion? If not, all favors say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried. Reviewing the fruit bids for county kitchen equipment at the Heritage Center, so we got a little bit of a hiccup last week when Sheila looked into this. When we opened, when I opened up those bids, it had the D Hayes Director name and his title.
Well, it had his, uh, I see where it's at.
So we found out Floyd County Veterans Affairs is not like this.
Yeah. And then, so it had their, um, that they were veteran affairs, they're childful, they're workful, they're work, um, uh, female, so we were kind of confused whether it should be to the county or to the person, so we, you guys elected to do that person, where did that happen?
The county. So the stove? The, what's his name? Fifty bucks?
Uh, Todd Schreiber.
So he's the only bid on that, I believe?
On the stove, correct.
Yep. And then we had two bids for the eight foot long stainless steel table. Uh, one was that same individual, Todd, and then one was Scott.
Scott, so.
So in the past, when we had a Todd bid like that, we would draw a little hat or a box. Is that the way you guys split the needle up? Then we had a Todd bid.
Can I just move my, I'll just move my bid, even had fifty bucks. Except you're fifty bucks more than the others.
I got the hat already, are you sure?
Just so that back in square, people are watching.
Yep.
I talked to Sheila about this last week. We thought both bids were on behalf of respective veterans affairs, both here in Chickasaw and Floyd, but in fact, they were individual persons not bidding on behalf of veterans affairs.
Correct.
So that's why we're redoing this, I don't know where you're looking at, because it's not a nonprofit that we're giving it to, it's actually an individual who just happens to be associated with a nonprofit that should have just been as an individual and not listed.
And then the other one is those two pieces of steel that Keith Allen's bid on for twenty-five dollars. Those are the two that was behind this kitchen sink that was deflecting the water into this. They're very small. Forty inch by forty inch piece of stainless steel, so. That one is not going with Chickasaw County Veterans Affairs, that one is going to Keith Allen's, so. Today to correct it is that to accept the two fifty from
Yeah, that is twenty-five.
Twenty-five from Allen's and then a fifty and a fifty for the stove and the garden she's sold to. Hundred and fifty-five dollars, just total. Does that all get that?
From that, they did, they got motion to accept the bids individually, not on behalf of the other.
Correct. Do they understand that? Do you agree into the old motions?
I don't think so.
Just corrected?
Yep, just a motion to correct. Um, get worried of the bids because they're gonna go into the individual persons and not any other entity or nonprofit.
Perfect. Is anyone make that set in motion?
I'm. Do you hear that?
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion by Travis, second by Scott, to give the stove and the dishwasher table fifty dollars each to Schreiber. And then twenty-five dollars to Keith Allen's for the two pieces of stainless steel. Any discussion on that? If not, all favors say aye.
All right.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried. Approved application for Class C retail up all license for the bulk tank LLC for a term of twelve months with a new date of expiring May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-six. Have all had that in effect?
The name on the outside of the building has changed to LT Tab, not bulk tank, so. I think, so now the ownership changed, it was two people on there, now there's just one.
Yeah, it says the name of the.
Gail Teague.
Was it Steve?
Yeah, Teague. And Noah Hall was the other owner, Teague, no longer owns the other half of it.
So that's correct that we say, yeah.
So the individual's owned by Gail, Teague?
Teague.
Teague? One hundred percent of the ownership.
That's all you.
Hmm, that, that's correct. It's just the name, it's not, I, they, they took.
Because the funny thing is the applicant says the name of legal entity is the bulk tank LLC.
They can still have their corporation or a little bit of the corporation company has that and then just operate as something else, so. As long as the ownership is direct or the state's documented, that's the actual entity that's applying for what they do their business as. Yeah.
Gotcha.
If that makes sense, yeah.
Larry, is there a motion to approve? Twelve month Class C retail up all license.
Only a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Isaac, to approve Class C retail up all license for the bulk tank LLC for a term of twelve months. Any discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
All right.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried. Many assignments? Everybody have? For a week, perfect. Discuss future agenda items, so I apologize, we do have to meet tomorrow. There was an email that Sheila got this morning when she came to work that there was a Class C retail up all license for the Bradford Guest House that expires tonight at midnight, right? Tomorrow sometime, tomorrow morning. So we're short meeting tomorrow on Monday, but it's, everyone posted. Uh, we just have to discuss and approve a Class C retail for the Bradford House. Somebody can call in if you want, or if you wanna make the trip in. Uh, we can line up some cell phones you call or the kind of line to call in. Otherwise, I will be here. They do have our I T stuff on for next week. Uh, our current provider is gonna get his hours of service. He worked current year and we can review that next week to see what we want to do with next fiscal year, so. Anything else that is, should be brought up to us, we'll discuss. If not, let the auditor know. Otherwise, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second? Sorry. Motion by Travis, second by Scott, to adjourn on one forty-fourth. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.